Southwest Florida, you're looking live at a candidate here. Gwen, who's a candidate for District Five for the Lee County School Board. She's gotten past the primary, now headed to the general, and she is the talk of Southwest Florida in terms of what she was able to accomplish a couple of months ago. Now, we're moving to the general election in November, on November the 6th. We got a chance now to sit down with this potentially history-making candidate for the Lee County School District Five, right here on Lee Pitts Live. Of course, I'm Lee Pitts, the host of Lee Pitts Live, and thanks for joining us here for this conversation with Gwen. Gwen, welcome to Lee Pitts Live.
Thank you very much. And first, I want to say thank you, gracias, merci, to all of the people that voted for me. We actually made history in doing that because I've never run for any office before. I knew nothing about politics except sitting on the couch and saying what they should be doing, and I find myself in this position. Thank you so very much for those that voted, and I hope you will come out and vote again and bring your friends that didn't vote, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that later.
Okay. That's Gwen Gittens. Remember that name? When they see it on the ballot, there's gonna have your whole name? I think your name is a little longer?
And it'll, it's actually Gwinetta, but I was only called that when I was bad, so it's-
On the ballot, it's gonna say-
On the ballot, it'll say Gwinetta Gwen Gittens. So you'll see the Gwen. I'm the first one on the ballot, so that also helps.
Okay. Some of you by now may have already received a mail-in ballot. They, they, they could, by this point-
No, the mail, the vote-by-mail will go out from the elections office on October the 5th, and hopefully you will receive something from me in the mail before that. You can request a vote-by-mail ballot up until the 22nd of October. Here's the benefit of doing that: You don't have to leave your house. You can dial 533-VOTE, or you can go online to lead.vote, and you can make sure that you get a vote-by-mail ballot. It will come to your house, you fill it out, "Vote Gwen Gittens," and it's a long ballot, folks. There, there's like two pages, there are a lot of amendments. I suggest you read up on those amendments first. There are books that explain it, also online.
And you're the Democratic candidate?
Well, it's a nonpartisan race, so-
So Republicans can vote either way as well?
Oh yeah. The only time that partisan matters like that is in the primary. And I think that was the case. A lot of people that are nonpartisans didn't vote in the primary because they thought it was only if you were Republican or Democrat, which is not exactly true. But in this, in the general race, everybody votes. Every vote counts. You can make your voice known, and the school board race is nonpartisan. It doesn't matter if, if any of us, if it was two Democrats or two Republicans, it's nonpartisan. It's just the individual that you feel can do the best job on the school board.
So let's Sesame Street this before we move on, make sure everybody's clear on this.
Yes.
Anybody who's a registered voter can vote for whomever they want to vote for, regardless of party affiliation.
Regardless of party affiliation. The general election is that, just that. It's general. It is for all of the, the different races and all the different things that are up: Governor, Mayor, I mean, not Mayor yet, but City Councilman, all of those things, legislators.
Okay, great.
Everyone can vote if they're registered.
Early on, you said thank you in various languages, Spanish and in Creole. I wanna expound on that a bit. In the demographics that your, your, your district is in, it's a very culturally diverse group of people, and you've been able to garner support from all people: Hispanics, Haitians, African-Americans, West Indians, whites, just the whole gambit. What about you has made you such an inclusive person and has made people respond to you in the way that they have?
I think my message really resonated to people because I continue to say that education has no color or creed. We need to educate every child. Every single child needs an education, no matter what language it's in. And one of the things I, I have prided myself as an educator is being able to connect with all of my students, with all of their parents, with all of my community. We are the fastest-growing, the most diverse, and the different district in Lee County. And I've said this to some of the board members: Our issues, our needs, our desires are so different from everybody on the other side of 75, and we have to be heard.
Even though it's a nonpartisan race, I wanna be clear on this: One, to vote for you must live in District Five.
You must live in District Five. That is Lehigh, Alva, Buckingham, Tice, Fort Myers Shores, and just a little bit on the other side of 75 up to Slater Road.
People are looking at you now and saying, "Hey, I'd love to get her to come out, meet with our group, our, whatever group they got." You're available for that, right?
I am definitely available. I think the only way that you will know that you really need to vote for me is to hear me and to hear what I believe in, what I think we need to do. And I will also tell people, I don't have a magic wand. I don't expect that on November 6th, if I win, that on November 7th, I'll pull out that magic wand and everything I've told you, that it's, it's going to happen. It's going to take collaboration, it's going to take a lot of work with everybody on the board, but we will be heard.
Before we go into some of the specifics there, let's talk about how people can get in touch with you. We got the information appearing on the screen from time to time, but I want you to give it verbally as well for radio purposes and TV purposes.
Okay. You can reach me by phone. My number is 239-839-4238. You can also email me. I am at Gwen Gittens, and remember, it's a Gwen with a Y, and it's Gittens like kittens with a G. So don't call me Ms. Kittens, people do that all the time. Anyway, it's Gwen Gittens, and the number four, the letter D, the number five, at gmail.com is my email. On Facebook, I am Gwen Gittens for School District Five. So look me up on, on, especially on Facebook. I do a lot of Facebook Live. When I'm out sweating, knocking on doors, I take you with me, so you can see what's going on.
We also encourage you to go to the Lee Pitts Live YouTube channel. You'll be able to watch this interview as many times as you want and share it with people, and continue to learn about this dynamic candidate for the Lee County School Board. Let's go to the, the process of you getting to this point. You started off against your incumbent. You were an underdog, and you slayed getting through the primaries, and you got the majority of the votes in the primaries. Expound on that.
Thank you again. There were five of us in the race, and in order to have this over in the primary, I would've had to get 50% plus one vote. I got 39, I believe.
Close to 40.
And, close to 40%. And I did win the race. It's just with the stipulation I had to have 50, I didn't, so, and that's okay. I have a picture posted on Facebook with the, I forget the runner's name, the athlete, and when she got to the finish line, she dove, and it was her fingers that won the race. And that's where we're at. We are ready to just run and dive and win this and take it home.
We're gonna go into some specifics, but I want to spend a little bit more time on the day after you won. I couldn't help but notice, the day after you won, you were out there holding up signs. I saw you all over social media, having thanked you, and what it said was, "You were not complacent."
Right.
Sure, we got this far, and we got to get these fingernails a little bit farther over that finish line.
That's right.
And I was so impressed with that. What kind of response did you get from people? Were they blowing their horns at you standing on the corners, or what?
They were, and it was, it was just really inspiring. I was sitting there, and I tear up thinking about it, because so many people were just supportive.
Tell us before, people are looking now saying, "Hey, we've seen Lee Pitts Live in a lot of locations, but we don't recognize where he is right now." We're literally sitting in your district at a dance studio. What's the, where are we?
It's Ellie Lopez, and it's International Entertainment. So she is going to, she's gonna speak to you in a little while, but I've known Ellie for a long time. When I worked at Lehigh, I mean, not East Lee, she used to come and do Zumba for us, and she will give you a workout. She has her own new studio now, and it's beautiful. She does Zumba. We're going to be doing an event here on October 6th to kind of showcase her place and also help people in the community. We'll talk about that. We'll be doing health screenings and voter registrations and all types of things, just to get people out and committed to the community.
Well, let's talk about that right now, since we're on that topic.
Okay.
Health screening, registered vote, education, corner speaks out, snacks and drinks, right?
Yes. The education, the education corner piece, I'm going to be here and probably some other friends of mine. We want to hear what the community has to say, what their needs are. That's what I've learned going out and talking to people and interrupting their dinner at the restaurant, or talking to them at their doors. We wanna know what it is the community needs. This, this whole race is about the community.
October 6th.
So, October 6th, you can come out, you can talk to me-
Time, you got a time?
At 1 o'clock, and we will have a bounce house, we will have music. It will be a lot of fun. And it's right on, I mean, on Leland Heights, I think it's 802, 801.
We'll get all of that-
You will get all that information.
When we talk to the director in another interview.
Okay.
Now, now we've covered that, let's go to you.
Yes.
Who is Gwen?
Gwen Gittens is a 16-year resident of the Lehigh Acres area, a 13-year employee for the Lee County School District. I taught at Lehigh Senior, East Lee County High School, Island Coast High School, Lehigh Middle, and for James Stevens in G. Weaver Hops.
Do you, based on all of that school experience that you've had-
Mm-hmm.
I would say that you are well-qualified for a position as a school board representative.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things that I noticed that you brought out in your discussions, or throughout your shaking hands and kissing babies and campaigning, is that you are disenchanted about the amount of trailer schools or modular schools-
Yeah.
-building here in Lehigh, when you have another school that is basically almost empty, but it's the location and the bussin'. Go ahead and elaborate on that.
Kinda going back to my experience, when I was working for the school district, I was also interested in being an administrator. So I did a lot of things that regular teachers don't do. I was involved in advisory boards, I spent a summer in, as an intern with Mark Mora, Dr. Carlin, a lot of things that I did that enlightened me to many of the things that are going on in the district. One of the things that I found out recently is that the school, when the school board and the current board decided and voted on building a school in Bonita Springs, at that very same time, we have 220 portables in the whole district. Of those 220, 116 of them are right here in my community.
In District Five.
In District Five.
Woo!
And-
So, almost over 50% almost?
It, it is. And the thing about it is, it was in 2015, I believe, that I was working on that report, and they knew that we needed a school. And I still don't understand, I guess one of the reasons I wanna get on the board is to find out, how was that decision made when we have, at Lehigh Senior, over 2,000 students, at Riverdale, there are over 2,000 students, and we have 116 portables in this district? How was the decision made to build a school where they have no portables? The school is half-full, not even 700 students. One of the main issues that I had about it is, and I talked to the superintendent about this, they have a lot of vocational training out there. One of them is HVAC, which is air conditioning training. And when I found that out, I asked the superintendent, "Why wouldn't they put that out in District Five?" Our socioeconomics in our, you know, district would suit itself more so to that type of training. And he said, "Well, the equipment was donated." And I said, "Well, why couldn't they put it on a truck and bring it out here?" I've, and now I know that that program is still not even full.
You called it ASAP? What, what was that?
HVAC.
Okay.
It's air conditioning.
Yeah, explain that to a viewer. What is-
HVAC is air conditioning training. It teaches the, the students how to install and fix anywhere from small air conditioners up to the industrial size. Why that's importantly is that one of the things we have is a disparity between the number of workers that are needed out here and the number of jobs that are available. I talked to a contractor just recently that said they, they would do anything to have suitable workers, and they, we're not putting them out. And that is the job of education, to take in your children, teach them all about education and what they need to do, to read and to get a good job. That's what our economy is based on, that cycle, and it's not working.
You talked about the modular unit type, what's the terminology for those types of schools?
Well, the portables or the trailers, some people call them.
And what does that say that, about representation for District Five? When you say, "I can't believe that this happened in our district when this other school was, was built in Bonita and not built here."
I-
What does that say about representation that District Five had at the time?
Let me put it like this: When the board, board voted to do that, had I been on the board at that time, you probably would've been doing an interview, 'cause I would've been up on top of the board table, saying, "Wait a minute, stop, hold on. What about our 116 portables? What about our children that are being forgotten out here in this district?" They turned us down to build a school up on Joel. They turned us down to build other schools and do additions out here.
So, that being said, your hallmark, your calling card is, you're going to speak out, stand up-
For District Five.
Represent District Five in a strong way.
For District Five. District Five is my home. I mean, I've lived here for 16 years, taught here. Some of the kids, I was waving signs on the corner one day, and this car pulls up, all these kids and folks get out. One of my students, married with five children, and he, all of his kids got out. I have pictures on Facebook, and he's saying, I said, "You have five kids?" He said, "Yeah." I said, "You need to vote for me, 'cause they need help in the schools." But we are turning out a lot of good students as well. I had two of my students last week that passed their bar exam. So we're doing good things.
What type of teacher were you? What subject did you teach? Just give us a background of you as an educator.
Okay. I taught business, I taught computer technology, I, and when I did technology, we were doing the Microsoft testing. And also at Lehigh Senior, I was the avid coordinator. I started the avid program over there. I taught entrepreneurship at Island Coast, and that was a, that was a really exciting class. And yet, the next year, they cut the class.
I see. You also have some experience in the private sector as a banker.
Yes.
Describe that particular job and how that will benefit you as a school board rep.
I pride myself at this point as being the only candidate in all of the races that has the educational experience, the administrative experience, and the business-savvy to do this job. I say, I worked for Bar Nation of America. I went through Barnett Bank, Nations Bank, and Bank of America. I went through three mergers. I know how to collaborate. I know how to run a budget. I know how to run a statewide department.
And you know how to manage things, 'cause you know, in the banking industry, many people out there know me as a senior vice president in banking, so-
So you know, you know the deal.
I won't get into me as a banker. Stay TV for right now.
Okay.
The, you talked about a few things already, but I want you to get a chance to expound on those things that you, you alluded to that encouraged you to get involved, to put your hand in the political arena, to try to make a difference. What are some of the things that really pushed you to the tipping point where you say, you said, "Hey, not only do I need to get involved, but I really need to run for office so that I can actually be at the table to influence things?"
When you talk to people about what they're going through, I was going down to renew a license or something in one of the city offices, and I'm sitting there talking to this man that had a nine-year-old and a 13-year-old. He lives out in Buckingham. And we were talking about education, and he talked about how hard it was with his son right now, making sure that he got everything he needed. The 13-year-old had a Chromebook, but where they live out in Buckingham, they don't have access to the internet. So in the evenings, he can't, you know, help them with that. I tutored for a while, and I tutored with grandparents who suddenly found themselves with their grandchildren that are in middle school, and they have no clue what to do. And I wanted to help those people navigate through this system, and if I can make that system easier for them, then I wanna do that as well.
The, when you are moving around, what has surprised you most from meeting people and talking to people? What questions has, or comments have surprised you most?
What surprises me most is the lack of education. And I don't mean book education, I mean, what's going on around you? I mean, I'll go to a house and the persons are retired, and they'll say, "Well, we don't have any children, so this doesn't affect us." Yes, it does. Because if we don't educate children and get them out to have a proper life, you will be affected. And the lack of knowledge from the parents, sometimes it's not that they don't want to be knowledgeable, but they don't know how. One of the things I've always said is, with the school board, we need to break things down so that everyone can understand them, so that everyone can know what we're talking about.
I call that Sesame Streating.
That's good. If we have to Sesame Street, that's fine.
That's right. Sesame Streating, so everybody can understand.
Yes.
The, you talked about early on that, when you were on the school board, you're gonna be a strong representative for District Five.
Mm-hmm.
But one of the things you're also going to be deliberating on as a school board representative is the entire district.
Yes.
Voting on various issues. Tell us how you're gonna strike that balance of supporting my district full throttle and making sure I have a big-picture view of where the school district is going to when I vote on other issues outside of my district.
I am, and have been, a data guru. I will sit down and get caught up in finding this and go in here and go in that. I do my homework, and I know that sitting on that board, I will represent my community. However, I also know the bigger picture, and I have a very good grasp of big-picture thinking. My master's degree is in education leadership, so I learned about finance on a big-picture scale in education. I watch the state Board of Education meetings. I go on DOE and find out what's going on. There's a lot of things that affect us at this level that people don't realize.
Let's go with that. Okay. Big picture and small picture.
Yes.
On a small-picture level, when I say small picture, I mean District Five.
Right.
On a big-picture level, I mean District at large.
Yes.
Let's take two things that wake you up at night, that you'll think about, "Hey, when I get in there, Lee, these are two main issues on the District Five level that we need to address immediately." And on the big-picture level, these are two things that we need to address immediately. Go.
Okay. On the District Five level, inclusion, respect, knowing that we're here and that our issues are slightly different from everybody else's.
That's right.
We don't have the same problems and issues that everyone else has. So what are those problems?
That's critical there, that you understand that every, every, every area's not the same.
Is not the same.
There you go.
So, we have different needs, and I want to be the spokesperson to let people know, "These are our needs, how can you help us get to them?" I do not profess to think that we will get all of our needs met immediately, but we wanna be at the table. We wanna be a part of the solution. And then, district-wide, I think we really need to look at priorities. One of the reasons that District Five has the issues that we have is that we were not a priority.
Mm-hmm.
And there are other things that happen that other districts and other schools are not a priority. We need to prioritize who gets a raise now and why, okay? What school gets fixed up now and why? There are, there are documents, and you can look them up on DOE, for work plans that say, if you put in an AC at this school, it's like, you know, with a car, and you got the little sticker that says, "You changed the oil now, and you do this now, and you do this, and you check this." That exists. So how can we get to a point where we don't have money to fix something that's broken?
I want you to tell me in your humble opinion, 'cause you just raised a really interesting point, who gets what and when. Is who gets what, in your view-
Mm-hmm.
-based on economics? Your income, the neighborhood that you live in, the district that you live in, your tax revenues that are brought in for your area, you, who makes the most noise? How do you think-
Those decisions are made.
That's right. And let me elaborate on that a little bit more, Gwen Gittens.
Mm-hmm.
I grew up poor.
Okay.
Our viewers know I grew up in the housing projects, and I made my way out and became what I became, and I went to segregated schools at the time, all-black schools, inner-city, and the education wasn't as good.
Right.
The kids across town were getting the kind of education that I know now that my son is getting, because I live in an affluent area, and I'm, I'm looking at this and I'm saying, "Hey, the kind of stuff that he's getting now, I didn't even know I wasn't getting, because we were passed over in our neighborhood."
Mm-hmm.
I'm just not trying to influence your answer. Let's go back to-
Nope.
Let's go back to, who is getting, who is getting the juice?
Okay.
How's that made?
Here, here's the thing. I don't know who's making the Kool-Aid, all right? And who's putting the sugar in it and where. One of the reasons I want to get on the board is to find out some answers and to be a part of the solution. One of my solutions to some, somewhat of the situation you mentioned-
Equal distribution.
About the equity, okay?
Right, right.
Um, one of my solutions to equity would be that each zone has their own everything encompassed. They have their career tech, they have their vocational, they have their sports, they have whatever. Think about it. It's not going necessarily back to neighborhood schools, but you don't have the issue, like when I worked at Lehigh, I mean, at East Lee, and we had kids that were bused from Dunbar out to East Lee, which is on the south end, the far end of Lehigh, that played sports. Those kids would get up at 4, 5 o'clock in the morning, get on a bus in Fort Myers, come out here, spend the day in class, get some snack or whatever, play a game, or go somewhere else to play a game, come back, get on a bus, get home at 10:30 at night, get up the next morning and do it again. Why? Why, why do we do that? And I know we're somewhat sports-driven, and I'm not touching football, but I'm just saying, we need to look at priorities, we need to look how things are done.
Well, you talk about the tech school. I've visited some of the tech schools in the Lee County District. I've been to the one on Michigan Avenue, of course, and I've been to the one out in the Cape-
In the Cape.
For TV-related things over the years. We don't have that type of tech education in your district?
We have somewhat, but my suggestion is, and this is one of my big campaign things that I would really love to see, in four years when I'm stepping down or whatever, getting ready to do this again, and they say, "What was your proudest moment?", it would be to take some of the existing commercial properties that have nothing happening in them. And I've talked to business people, I've talked to business owners and real estate people. We have properties sitting all over District Five. In Buckingham area, there's a Wynn Dixie that's empty. Why can't we turn that into a vocational school? Two things: It helps to alleviate some of the crowdedness at the schools, it also helps to train kids that really don't wanna go to college, that aren't fit for that at this point, to have something viable to add to our community.
Okay, so you don't have blinders on. You don't think that everybody is going to go to college and that's their only track. You, you have an open mind in terms of the different ways that students can go out and still become productive citizens, because as an educator, you've learned along the way that there are many ways that people can be successful.
Oh yeah. Like, people say, "There's more than one way to skin that cat." And when you, when you look at what the student's aptitude is- And when you, when you look at what the student's aptitude is and what they really will be good at. And I, I, that backs me into one of my other thoughts. I really believe, especially in high schools, that we should have a counselor, either an assistant administrator or, or a principal for each grade level. And when that cohort, a cohort meaning the class of twenty eighteen, when they start as freshmen, they should have their, um, their administrator, their guidance counselors, their everybody as a group. That group moves with them up to twelfth grade. Because what that means is that by tenth and eleventh grade, that counselor knows Johnny is just not college material. He doesn't like to sit still. Not that he's not smart enough, but he likes to move, roll around on the floor, he likes to use his hands. So they can talk to him and guide him where he's going to be successful. By twelfth grade, they know what kind of things he can do. They could have already helped him get to the, the vocational tech school over here to do automotive.
And you can make a good living in vocational type jobs. Let me move a little farther here. The, one of the, the mottos that I think that I've heard related to your campaign that's really, really piercing and effective, and it drew my attention, when you say, each can win with Gwen. Expound on that.
Well, the each can win with Gwen, the E means to empower. I really want to empower our teachers to be respected as the professionals that they are, get paid for it, and let them teach. Stop giving them the do this, stand here, this time, be there. Let them be teachers. We're losing a lot of them because they're losing respect for that profession. Empower our students, just like I was saying. To go into vocational and make vocational a, a really good thing, not, oh, you didn't make it, so you're in vocational. I would love to see the state have a graduation, a, um, not a certificate, but a diploma. That's a vo-tech type of career.
We don't have that?
We don't have that.
Okay.
Okay? You can get, um, certifications that equal up to the diploma, the regular diploma and all. But I would like to see it just its own track. The A is for accountability. I will be accountable to you. I will be accountable to, and, and if you see me up there doing something, you don't know what, call me, text me, say, what's up with this, okay? We need to be accountable. The C is community. No community is successful unless everybody works together. And the H is heartfelt. And I definitely have that. So each can win with Gwen. Everyone, the community, the schools, the parents, the teachers, everyone.
Outstanding. The, um, the community, when you say each can win with Gwen, one of the things about this community is you have so many different people with so many, uh, language differences and so on. Uh, I think English as a second language is a big to do, but we have a lot of immigrants in your district.
We do.
Um, do you think that the district now is like conscious of that, has systems in place to embrace that? And if not, what are some things you would like to see put in place?
I, I think they do have some systems and they do address it. But I've seen, what is the no child left behind? A lot of kids are left behind because. I have sat in a classroom and had a student come in that is monolingual. That just came a few weeks ago. And they sit there in my classroom and the only thing I can do to communicate with them is to try to have another student that speaks the language to help them. We need more aides in the classroom that can help that student to assimilate. And to find out which way they need to go and which things they need to do.
You've had a chance, you say you go to school board meetings and so on and so forth. You got a chance to, you keep up with this kind of stuff like a little geek, you said. What has been your fair assessment of the performance of the current superintendent, Dr. Atkins?
I know Dr. Atkins very well. In fact, when I was getting my master's degree, I, um, got it at Nova, and he was one of my instructors. So I think that they, like I said before, there are some good things going on in this district. A lot of the things, when you hear the board talk about it, like the incumbent, and they will say, oh, we have a lot of plans and this plan and that plan. I think the plans are moving too slow. I think the things that we need, our, our demographics, our growth, um, our needs, are not matching up with the plans. We need to look at priorities and what it is that we need to do first and second and third, and why are we choosing this first?
One of the things that was startling that stood out to me when I looked at the numbers out there, the primary, and you got about forty percent of the vote, and I think the incumbent got about twenty-nine percent, something like that, right? Okay. And then all of those other votes that added up to one hundred percent went to the other candidates who were in the race.
Yes.
What that said to me is that all of those votes that were not cast for the incumbent were cast against the incumbent. So your forty percent and everything else added up, let's just round the incumbent's number off to, uh, thirty percent just for simplicity purposes. Seventy percent of the people who voted, voted against the existing administration, the incumbent. Your thoughts on that?
I think part of it, yeah, put me on the spot. I think part of that is they don't know the incumbent. I am, I'm visible, I'm out there, I'm talking to people. And when people don't know you, sometimes they don't trust you, they don't know what it is you're doing. I, you will know that I'm on that school board. Now, not in a confrontational way, a collaborative way. But also presenting the fact that this is my community and here's this pie and you're dividing it up, where's our piece?
How are you gonna involve the community? Are you gonna have community meetings around, are you gonna have an office in your district? Are they gonna have to come down there on Colonial, I think it is, to find you?
No, because most of my district and my community are working people. They don't have time to come to the board meetings, they don't have time to participate in a lot of those things. I will be visible to them. One of the things I had suggested about the board meetings even is to, we have technology now, why not have people like Facebook Live? Send in a question. You know, I'm, I'm at work, I'm working my second job and I can't get there, but I want to know why such and such. The squeaky wheel gets the oil. And the people that come to the school board meeting usually have someone say, well, call me afterwards and I'll take care of this or whatever. What if you can't get there? I want to do, um, you know, I'll meet with Ellie and I'll come down and meet with her folks at her studio sometimes. You know, I'll go to the, the civic center, wherever people are that need me to come. I will be there. If you have a question, whatever, ask me.
When you say you have passion for the community, what do you mean?
I want to see our community successful. I don't want to see people that, oh, yeah, Lee High. No. They need to be saying, yeah, Lee High. And we are doing things, we are moving along, we are.
Growing.
You know, growing. But with that, growth comes problems, so we need to get together to decide, okay, we're growing, what are we gonna do with that growth? You know, it's like if, if you're married or something, your wife gets pregnant, you gotta figure where are you gonna put that child? What, how are you gonna raise them, how are you gonna feed them? We're at that stage. We have a lot of community organizations that are, in my mind, I've been to a few of them, and they're kind of splintered. We need some way to get us all together to sit down at one table and come up with, what do we want to see? That vision. I used to have my students do a vision, um, ten years out, and I would have them close their eyes. And I would describe, okay, you're getting out of bed, you're going to work, you're doing this. Now, open your eyes and write it down, what did you see? And that's what we need.
You said early on that you thought that the educators, the teachers should be paid like professionals.
Yes.
Okay? That means more money, more money. Now, uh, and you are a numbers person and you understand budgets and all of this. You think that there's a realistic way, I want you to, to describe it to me, that teachers can be, uh, is that a performance based or you just think that there should be an increase in teachers' salaries across the board in the district? If so, where is that money going to come from? Take it from here, put it there. You got the stage.
Okay. First of all, I, I don't agree with the performance base. There's a program now that, um, a certain percentage of teachers get an increase based on their performance. You have some really good teachers that don't get the nod to get that money. And it's tax money. So, excuse me, why shouldn't everyone get it? I don't think we should single out people.
And all classrooms aren't the same.
And all classrooms aren't the same.
Depending on what school you in.
And you know what? They will sometimes, this goes to our issue in this county somewhat. They will give, you know, A teacher the best kids that are, you know, um, A, B students. And then they'll give this teacher the bottom twenty-five.
Strong support at home.
Strong support at home.
Parents, right, got the techno, got the everything, the resources.
These kids over here, like one student I had couldn't do his project on a storyboard because he did not have room at home to spread it out. There were so many people living in his house. I mean, we've got to deal with both sides. And the teachers deal with both sides. And when we talk about paying them more, I think respect and paying the teachers what they deserve will attract the right teachers. We have some really good teachers, I talked to a teacher the other day that called me. She said, I've got my keys in my hand, I'm locking my door of my room, and I really don't know if I want to open it again tomorrow. Just the frustration. I mean, it's, they.
We have a high turnover too for teachers. I think I, I can't remember the exact number, I'm sure you do, but I, it was just an amazing number, the new teachers that come in each year. If you know that number, give that number and tell me, how does that take away from the education process? Having the constant turnover of our educators?
I'm, I'm not gonna quote it because I'm not sure exactly what it is.
Okay.
Any number of turnover in teachers is too high. Okay? Any number. Because, um, the students, like, uh, a student told me the other day that goes to elementary school. I said, oh, how do you like school this year? Well, it's okay, but I thought I was gonna have Ms. Jones, because they told me last year, and I knew her and I really wanted to be in her class. She's not there anymore. Okay? So now you have to bring in another teacher, you have to train them, they have to get the lay of the land, they have to understand the kids. And again, we go back to the, the, the constant thing we need to do in education is relationship, relevance, and rigor. Relationship with that student first. If you don't like me, or you think I look funny, or I talk funny, or I talk down to you, I can't teach you anything. Because in your mind, all you're thinking about, she sure looks funny. You know, she sure talks funny, I don't like her. That is clouding me trying to teach you two plus two. So we have to have that relationship. That's where going back to keeping the same guidance counselor throughout that child's time at a particular school will help. We need to talk to the teachers. We need to find out why it is they're leaving. They now say they have an exit interview. When I left and retired, I didn't get an exit interview.
Yeah, but you were in the system, you heard some of those conversations along your journey. Is money one of the factors? And what are some other factors you think that, uh, require us to have such a difficult time with retention of, uh, educators?
Money is one of the factors, um, discipline is another, and I.
Elaborate on discipline.
Discipline meaning, okay, you're a high school teacher, you have a kid in your class that cuts up, that is, and normally, the ones that cut up are the ones that don't get it. And their way of dealing with it is to take away time from the teaching. And when, when, when you're a savvy teacher and you understand that, then you know how to divert that child. But some of the younger teachers or the teachers that haven't had that kind of experience, they get a disruptive child. You call down to the office and say, come get so and so. They come and get so and so, they take them down to a cool down room for five minutes and send him right back up. And then you are left to deal with it. We have a thing called restorative justice. The purpose of restorative justice was good in that we don't want to suspend children to keep them away from learning. But we have to do that type of program with fidelity. While they're away from that classroom, they should be learning, they should be talking to the counselor to find out what is the problem? What is going on? Why are you disrupting this class? The teachers don't have time to do all of that and process that. Because it's do this, say this, do this, say this. An administrator will walk in the room and look at your lesson plans that you have on the side and say, oh, it's three o'clock on Thursday on the twenty-fifth, and you're not at this point, what's happening? You gotta move along.
With about ten minutes left, I want to hit a couple of quick points. And something that you just said brought this to mind, uh, when it comes to discipline. We, you know this as well as many people who follow the education system. A disproportionate amount of students, minority students, low income students are put in, uh, are disciplined harsher. Expelled from school more often. Put in remedial courses more often, they're just taken out of the mainstream, which, um, many people are disenchanted about that. You are aware of that, I'm sure. So unpack that a little bit and what your thoughts are on remediating that situation as well.
The inequity. To me, it boils down to two things, empathy and sympathy. One of the things, somebody asked me, what will you bring different to the board? I'll bring empathy to the board. Empathy meaning, the quick example of it is, a, a friend of yours or a fa- family friend may die and you go to the funeral. Okay? And you knew them, so you have empathy and say, oh, I'm so sorry, you know, that this happened. A friend of yours said, well, I'll just ride along with you. They have no idea who they are. They go up to the family and say, I'm so sorry. That's sympathy. Okay? They don't really feel it. What we don't have is that empathy for understanding the minority children. That goes back to the fact of the administration. We need to look at, before we place an administrator, a principal, a group of administrators in a school, we need to look at the demographics of that school. We need to look at the academics of that school. Who best fits this group? Not which friend are we gonna put over here because it's time for them to have a school? And I'm sorry, I said that, but it does happen. We have to match the demographics with the school. An example, and I've said this.
No different than when you see other businesses in different communities have different ethnic groups working in those communities, you see it all the time.
There you go.
Different banks in different communities have different ethnic groups. If you go to Miami, to a bank in Miami, you're gonna see mostly Hispanics on the platforms there. And they know that these people relate better.
Exactly.
So, uh.
And it's not that anyone is better or worse, but it's just relatable.
It's America.
I mean, you know.
Police officers, uh, uh, police departments, everybody works on trying to get that type of.
In their community. Because if you can relate, you can understand. It goes back to that relationship, relevance, and rigor. You have to relate to the person before you get there.
But we have to, uh, promote to administrative levels more diversity to fill in to some of those spots as well. Because I know, and you know, and everybody else knows that that has been a challenge for minorities to get, um, uh, promoted and put in these high administrative positions.
Exactly. I told someone just the other day that, um, when they were talking about me being on the board. And I said, yes, I know I have the opportunity of possibly being the first African American that sits on that board. And it's not that I don't relish that, I do.
Over a hundred years of that board existing.
Hundred and twenty-nine, to be exact.
Existing. That goes back to slavery people.
I will be, I will be very, very.
Where are we doing here?
I don't know.
We're way behind, Jesus.
I will be so proud to be that person.
Name and thing.
I know.
My mom's saying, don't do that, but I mean, really, I, I, you know, you get, you getting my juices flowing when you say a hundred and twenty-nine years.
A hundred and twenty-nine years, but here's the thing. I told someone the other day, I said, I would add that empathy to the board because I've been there and I know that. And, uh, someone said, well, you know, other people have suffered and have been poor. I said, but you haven't lived in my skin. You haven't lived in my skin to understand. I said, I want to sit on that board in that big black chair and look out into that audience and see kids, little brown kids and black kids, that look up at me and say, I can do that one.
That's great, that's gonna be a powerful moment. Andrew Gilligan.
Yes.
Uh, Democrat candidate for governor of the state. Uh, Democrat candidate for governor of the state of Florida.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, he made history along that way. When you made history is being the, the nominee for the, um, the general election for the school district, both African-American. Just in general, you have any thoughts about Andrew Gilliam as governor?
I just, my main thing about any election is to select the best person for the job. It goes back to what you were saying that we are missing in our communities, and it's education. So many people just listen to somebody on the street. You know, people will vote based on, they were riding on the bus the other day and they heard two people sitting in front of them talking about, oh, this person sucks or whatever. They don't look into it, they don't educate themselves, they go and they vote, and all they think about are those two people sitting on the bus that said that this person sucks, so they vote for the other person. You've got to educate yourself. We have that education everywhere. Call me, you know, call someone, find out about the candidates. Choose the best person for the job.
Is that what you say to, uh, when people see you?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we see that you're African-American, but we know that you're uniquely qualified as well to do what you do. Do you want people to separate race from you? Or you want to embrace that diversity and the fact that you're well-qualified as well?
I, without sounding really cocky, I am the whole package. I'm going to.
And a female.
And a female. I am African-American now, I will be when I sit on the board, that's not gonna change.
Right.
I have, um, two degrees, and I will have two degrees when I sit on the board. I have experience in banking and the real world and also in education. That's not gonna change. I am who I am.
And you're a former educator.
And I'm a former educator, um.
That's a package.
Yeah, I, I've got everything that is necessary to lead our community to be the not-forgotten community that we are now.
It has certainly been our pledge to get a chance to sit down and have a full conversation with somebody who is on the verge of making history, and is, uh, you got a chance to see her up close. Uh, Gwen Gittens. We're gonna, Gwen, I'd like for you to take, uh, opportunity now to look into that camera, take about thirty seconds and make some final comments to, uh, the, the Lee County people.
Okay. First of all, again, thank you so much. We got over that first hurdle, there is one more to get over. If you really want to be represented properly for the community that we are, the wonderful, diverse, fast-growing community that we are, vote for Gwen Gittens. Each can win with Gwen. And remember, basically, that H, it's heartfelt. I know, understand, and want to represent you in the education arena on the Lee County School District, District Five. Don't forget to vote.
Shake hands.
Okay.
When we come back, we're gonna get a chance to talk to the owner of this dance studio. You'll find out more about it as well. All that's happening on Lee Piss Live, so remember, for those who say it can't be done, they are usually interrupted by those like Gwen Gittens and all the people who are associated with her campaign who are doing it. So, Lee Piss Live, we'll see you.